Uh, City Council Special Meeting tonight, August twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five. Um, if you could get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kern.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Hefner.
Here.
Councilmember Cooperman.
Here.
Mayor Lake.
Here.
Councilmember Fahey.
Here.
Mayor Pro Temp Dickinson.
If you could stand with me and say the pledge of allegiance. Great. Um, our first item tonight is discussion of direction on the two thousand twenty four I E C C. And I think we start with the staff presentation here. Am I right?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Rob Zucaro. I'm the Community Development Director for the city, so I'm going to be making the presentation here to get this discussion started. Also wanted to mention, we have our Chief Building Official here, Chad Root, and we have Jennifer Henderson, our Fire Marshal with the Louisville Fire Protection District here to help answer questions. Um, we have Andre with Schum's Coda, who was Schum's Coda was part of the Cohort Energy Code. So I believe he's online or gonna, no, we're hoping he's online to answer any technical questions about that code as well. Um, so I just wanted to mention that before we get started. And um, this is kind of our, our check in. I will mention what we're hoping to do tonight is to get through some key policy items and then come back with an adoption package. Um, doesn't mean we have to make all of our decisions tonight, but there are some critical things that will be helpful so that we can put a final adoption package together and come back. Um, I think right now we're hoping October for first reading, November, one of the meetings for second reading. I don't have the exact dates, but that's the cadence. Um, what we're looking to do is adopt the two thousand twenty four International Code Series with local amendments. Um, right now we're under the two thousand eighteen I code series, but the two thousand twenty one Energy Code, all with local amendments. So these are all the codes that would be adopted, um, addressing residential buildings, mechanical plumbing, fire. Um, pool and spa code, I think it's a new poll out for a new code. So this is the whole list. There's a ton of detail. We don't have time to go in into all of it, but I wanted to give an overview. It's a, it's a ton of different codes. So the way these get adopted is we adopt these code books by reference. And then within our municipal code, we have that adoption by reference, and then we have all the local amendments listed. So you kind of have to be able to open the code book and also reference the local amendments. So within your staff packet, we did provide all that information. Um, both for the two thousand eighteen codes and then the twenty four codes, we have initial drafts of all the codes. Um, we've worked with the Building Code Board of Appeals, which is your advisory board um, on building code adoptions. They've helped with the initial drafts of the code, and so those recommended code versions or those initial drafts are in the packet as well um, with the proposed local amendments. So here's kind of digging into what we want to get out of this evening. We're hoping to get out of this evening as much as we can again, so we could advance with an adoption package. Um, I've kind of broken it out into three groups. The first is all the codes. There's you know, there, there's bigger policy issues that I'll talk about, but with all of the codes. Um, you know, the package is in there. Chad put together an attachment which has some of the main differences between the two thousand eighteen and the two thousand twenty one code. So we're wanting to confirm tonight that you want to proceed with the two thousand twenty four I code package. Um, again, you have a recommended version from the Building Code Board of Appeals. Um, if there are any local amendments that you want to consider that aren't included in that amendment package in that draft, we would like to understand that, or if you want more information um, about any potential code amendments, that would be helpful as well. Certainly, you could also take no action and keep the two thousand eighteen codes. Um, and that's some, something we can certainly discuss as well. Um, and then the two big policy items that we've pulled out for a more in-depth discussion is the Energy Code, the I E C C, the International Energy Conservation Code. So there's two code versions actually in your packet. One is the Building Code Board of Appeals Recommended Version with local amendments, and I'll get into more details on that. There's a regional code cohort. They have a version of the code that's being promoted throughout the Denver region. Um, another option is to maintain our current twenty one code with amendments, and I'll again get into more details on that. So we're hoping to get some direction from council on what you want us to move forward with on the adoption package. The other thing we pulled out for discussion is fire sprinklers. Um, we've, sorry, residential fire sprinklers in particular. We've, we've had that as a requirement in the past. That was amended out of our code. Um, the twenty four base code has that, the um, the package that the Building Code Board of Appeals um, has included, keeps that in, it's not amended out. The Louisville Fire Protection District is recommending keeping that in the code. The other option is to remove that from the code. So just as we're, I'm going through the presentation and the discussion, these are the main points. There could be others, but these were the things that we thought of, we'd want to focus on. Really likes this slide. It doesn't want to go to the next one. Let's see. Okay, sorry. Okay, so just a little bit about the I, the I code series. Again, I've already talked about this. All of the amendments are in there for you to look at. The Building Code Board of Appeals worked with Chad and our staff to put that package together. Um, what I, so what I wanted to mention was we're going from the two thousand eighteen codes, sorry, I already went over that other slide, from the two thousand eighteen codes to the two thousand twenty four code. Um, I wanted to mention that there was a twenty one code version. We've had a practice here traditionally of skipping a code version, so we usually only adopt codes every six years. Um, the reason is, is it helps with predictability for the development community. Um, a lot of cities don't adopt every code cycle. There's some benefits to that, just for being business friendly and predictability of our code. Um, they do set minimum standards for health and safety primarily, also environmental protection. Um, the benefit of using something like the International Code Series is it's been vetted nationally by a lot of experts um, and industry experts and code experts. It does reflect the latest building sciences, technology and best practices. Um, it does take into consideration feasibility and cost considerations. So sometimes they add things to the code, they pull them out if there are issues from version to version. Um, because it's vetted so broadly, it also ensures uh, legal compliance with federal regulations. We definitely need to make sure we're in compliance with all state laws. So again, um, attachment number ten to the staff memo includes kind of a comparison of the two thousand eighteen to the twenty um, twenty four codes. Um, so I wanted to talk a little bit about the Energy Conservation Code, just to set the stage. As you know, we've been iterating on that since we adopted the two thousand eighteen codes. Um, in two thousand twenty one, when the new Energy Code came out, we did work with City Council to adopt that code. And there was one notable amendment that was made, which was to include the net zero residential appendix. So that came in in two thousand twenty one with that code. In two thousand twenty two, council wanted to look deeper at the commercial code. And we added some local amendments, including all electric heat pump requirements for commercial development. There's a lot of exceptions for different types of commercial development, but generally for space and water heating for commercial development that wasn't industrial processing, food processing, restaurants. Um, the, the base code said that you had to have electric heat pump systems for space and water heating. We also put in an energy modeling requirement for certain commercial uh, type developments. It wasn't all commercial types, but some commercial types, we were modeling off the City of Boulder code. Um, in two thousand twenty five, the City Council did pull back some of those code amendments. We did remove the requirement for that net zero residential code. Um, we um, we, we made a lot of amendments, but the, I think these were the most impactful. One was to, for that energy modeling for certain commercial developments. We removed one, we removed monitoring and sub metering requirements. So you just had to model once you were built and you meet the standards of the modeling. We weren't requiring that of, of the modeling, we weren't requiring monitoring. Um, we also loosened up the electric heat pump requirements a little bit by allowing natural gas backup, which wasn't allowed um, previously. So what, again, what is before you today are a few options that, again, we hope to get some understand what council's desire is to move forward. Um, I'm going to start with, again, maintaining the current, the current code. Um, we've had it for a while. You know, some of the benefits are, we've adopted some recent amendments that have made it more feasible to implement. Um, it does maintain all electric heat pump requirements for commercial development, which the other options don't do as a mandatory requirement. So those would be two potential reasons to stick with that twenty one code. Um, another option is to adopt the regional code cohort. So I can go into a more in-depth background, but I think you're probably familiar with that because we've talked about it a lot, but we can go into the history of that. It started here around in Boulder County with some of the surrounding jurisdictions. It's now moved to Dr. Cog. They've spent a lot of, uh, there's been a lot of work to try to get regional alignment of an energy code. Um, some of the benefits of having that regional code is it puts everybody on a level playing field from a business standpoint. Um, so you know, if one or two jurisdictions have really strict energy codes, it could push development off to other communities who are building less efficiently. And that's not really meeting the goals of reducing carbon and having more efficient building. So having regionality can be really important with this type of code. Um, that code cohort package just came out earlier this year for both commercial and residential. It's part of a multi-year effort as each three-year code comes out to have more um, more impactful codes each three years, moving towards reducing um, the impact of development, the environmental impacts of development. So that cohort code, it will strongly incentivize all electric heat pump use, but it doesn't require it. There are some federal regulations where requiring um, all electric heat pumps could be problematic. So that's why they've strongly incentivized it, um, instead of requiring it. Um, they have some provisions that if you build a, a large home, there's more stringent requirements for how efficient the building is. There's several compliance pathways that you can choose from, so that flexibility is generally seen as a good thing. But when you get into those compliance pathways, um, it's easier if you're going all electric and it's more stringent if you have a larger home, for example. So a lot of details in there, but those are some things that we wanted to point out. Um, the Building Code Board of Appeals um, has put together a, a code package. It is to adopt the twenty four base code. There are some local amendments in there, but they're minimizing the local amendments. Basically, there are standards in there for the thermal envelope, so that we know regardless of how they model the building or what compliance path they take, we would be assured that it is an efficient building from the building envelope, but otherwise we're relying on the base twenty four code. So there are no particular incentive, particular incentives to go all electric. Um, but it is still a, a strong code compared to previous years with multiple compliance paths. So the benefit um, of adopting the twenty four base code with minimal amendments is it's more straightforward, um, easier to implement, both for city staff as well as um, the building community and as well as developers and investors. Um, you know, it will be probably more affordable to build under that code as well. So those are some of the things to consider when considering which code the, this community should be working towards. So residential fire sprinklers, um, again, we initially adopted fire sprinkler requirements in two thousand eighteen for residences. Um, you have a letter in your packet from the Fire Protection District recommending inclusion in the twenty four codes. There are quite a few other communities in our region that have adopted residential sprinkler requirements. We've listed them here. Um, I did provide a publication from NFPA, um, the National Fire Protection Association. They had a twenty four analysis of residential fire sprinklers. I think it was, they, they tracked residences from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty one that included residential fire sprinklers. Um, you know, homes with and without fire sprinklers. Some of the things they found is that when the fire sprinklers were triggered in a residence, they were effective in controlling the fire ninety eight percent of the time. Um, only one fire sprinkler activated eighty five percent of the time. So residential fire sprinklers can just activate one sprinkler head depending on where the fire is. The importance of that is the whole house, there's less property damage from the water from the fire sprinklers. So that's often seen as a plus for the residential fire sprinklers. Um, civilian deaths and injuries, um, there were eighty nine percent fewer deaths, thirty one percent fewer injuries than in homes without fire sprinklers. Uh, property loss was fifty five percent lower than in homes without fire sprinklers, and the firefighter injury rate was forty percent lower. Um, cost estimating, what a fire sprinklers cost to put into new construction is a little more difficult. There was some information from the NFPA. It ranged from just under a dollar to, I think, around four dollars a square foot. Um, there wasn't a lot of current information. We did reach out to one local fire sprinkler installer who suggested a dollar sixty five per square foot was probably a good average for what they would, what we would see in our region. For a twenty five hundred square foot home, that would be about a four thousand dollar cost to building that home. Um, that's a, a little under one percent of a home cost at two hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. That's, that's probably the baseline for what it costs to build a home. We see a lot of homes that are three to four hundred dollars a square foot. Okay, so I'm back to those alternatives. That was just kind of a, a high, high-level quick overview of the items that we wanted to talk about. Um, happy to answer any questions. Um, or I'm, I'm not sure how you want to address the discussion, Mayor, but happy to do, take your lead.
Thank you. Um, before we do anything more, um, I want to just express appreciation to the Building Code Board of Appeals. Um, it's been a long and torturous road at times, um, with the, the board, because sometimes we've um, we've just been on different time schedules, and I know staff is trying to make changes and so forth. And it's nice to have something that's been fully vetted before the presentation here, and I would thank uh, you, I'll, um, and staff for helping that too. I mean, it's, it's a lot of work. Um, I also want to make a point that um, you know, the, the folks that have had to do with this so far are professionals. This is one of those areas where um, it's kind of, it, it's not funny that council has to make decisions, but we're in a position where um, this is way beyond most of our expertise. Um, uh, and, and some of us more than others, so um, I very much value that discussion that's already in place, and there'll be undoubtedly some more after tonight, but um, anyway, I think you know, there's, there's two pieces that you've described, one of them being the, the, I think, um, the adoption of the codes and um, and then the sprinkler piece, which is uh, separate, but also important. Um, and I think the first thing we'll do is take some council questions. I'm very interested in getting uh, public comments um, on this. I, I noticed, hold on for just a second. Do we have? I mean, this is discussion and direction. Right?
That's correct.
So we're not voting on a, a policy. Um, let's, let's ask council members if they have questions so far. Yes. Great. Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. I'll echo the, the sentiment um, to all staff and the BCBOA for um, putting this much effort into it. It's, it's incredibly helpful. You um, help make our decisions a lot more informed and a lot easier, so I thank you for the hard work. These are actually two fire-related questions, so it may be that um, our Marshall Henderson is best. Uh, some of this might be though for you, Rob. One's a cost question with the water. Uh, so I was just saying in here, there's not a specific mention on any kind of fire protection measures for the battery backups that are being installed in a lot of people's homes, especially ones that have solar added. Is, is there any recommendations or provisions that you're aware of?
So that's actually something that I believe we're putting into the amendments of the code. Um, we're trying to bring more of a location-based approach with that. Um, we're going, we're trying to bring the batteries outside from the interior envelope, particularly right now. They can be in basements, they can be essentially anywhere, and that's a concern when those things in, if and when those things go off, we're now battling a basement fire um, with a very volatile substance versus something that's on the exterior of the home that we can potentially pull away and get away from the rest of the envelope of the building.
And, and there's also, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, there's an added danger if water is added to that element?
So, um, lithium itself, yes, but lithium ion, no, we actually typically have to submerge those batteries for extended periods of time, whether that be water or sand, to basically smother it. So it, it wouldn't cause like an explosion in the sense of the, 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 the element itself. Batteries themselves can create explosions from the gases they create, so I don't want to misconstrue that, but.
And like, and from a firefight firefighter safety perspective too, moving forward as um, a lot of these are being implemented. Because this is going to be like for new construction.
Yes.
But I was thinking too, if there's something, like, we're not going to be implementing this for um, existing or additions, but if people do retrofit their homes and want to add greater energy efficiency in the battery backups, I was curious if there were um, recommendations of added firefighting or fire safety measures that we needed to be aware of. I thought since we're already discussing this, bringing this up, that I didn't want to miss that point, because I think we hear a lot about, especially with vehicles, but the home fires too, that this is becoming a challenge for our firefighters.
Yes, I mean, they, uh, there's a lot of work that's been done in New York to regulate these things, especially with uh, the mobile bikes and everything, and the way that you can purchase any kind of battery anywhere. Um, I think it's a fair point. There is, we do want to consider cost as well. Retrofitting is a much more expensive process than a new build. And I think most of our strategy or, or our focus is to try and bring those systems outside of the building itself, so that it's not creating also additional cost alongside.
Yep. So we, we do have amendment in the residential code and the commercial code regarding E S S, um, energy storage systems is, that's what they're um, called in the, the codes. And what we're looking as far as outside the building is actually outside the thermal envelope, meaning that on the residential structure, those will be put into the garage. Okay, so they're, they're protected out of the weather, but they're not in the basement where they can be put now. Um, when those um, react or they, they go off, the, the smoke, the gases, um, for firefighters to go down and fight it, basically the whole house is ruined for anybody moving into it, number one. The firefighters going down to fight the fire, basically the direction from Louisville Fires, they're not sending men down there other than to search for people, and then they're not going to fight the fire down there. Okay, because it's so volatile and the gases and the, the smoke are so toxic, right? So what we're trying to do on this amendment is bring it into the garage where you have the firewall, the fire separation. And if it does go off, chances are that family can come back into their home and it's separated out um, from the, the smoke in the rest of the house. It's not in the house, right? So two things, firefighters' lives, um, open the garage door, let it ventilate, um, um, maintain it, and also keep the toxic elements, um, when it does go off, out of the residence, so family can come back into the house.
And that's definitely a component that we could keep in here, even if we did not want to include the entire fire sprinkler requirements in the code.
Yeah, so that, that portion is actually in the, the other body of the code as far as amendment in the residential. Um, it's in the fire code and it's in the building code as well, as far as um, that aspect of it.
Thank you. Uh, so the next question is about the suppression system and the cost. Um, there seems to be like mixed comments on whether people would need to increase the size of the tap or need to have like housed cisterns for them and how that works and how, what you could comment on how different a um, sprinkler system or fire suppression system works in a multifamily residence versus single families.
So there are distinct differences between a fire sprinkler system that uh, is in a condo or an apartment building, that is at a thirteen R system, that is just below the big thirteen commercial system. It has its own dedicated underground fire line that has to meet state regulations, national regulations. Um, the thirteen D system is a single-family home dedicated to giving people enough time regardless of age and abilities to get out of the building. It's not intended to the same level as thirteen systems, which are intended for property protection. Now, it is a benefit. They are really effective. Um, but the tap side, since you're utilizing the domestic line, um, it, depending on water flow and all kinds of calculations and the size of the buildings, you may not need to have a drastic size in your tap um, increase. I believe the water department doesn't charge for any kind of upsizing, is my understanding?
That is correct. Public Works does not um, charge for an upsize. So if you have to go from, and this is new construction that we're talking about. So if you have to go from a three-quarter inch um, to a one inch, they will not charge the difference to the homeowner for the meter increase or fire suppression systems.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, other councilmembers, yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
Um, while we're on the topic of the fire sprinklers, um, I just had one question. I mean, has there been in, in the vetting of the, I guess, most of the international fire code? Um, have there any, have there been concerns about whether or not to include um, a requirement for residential fire sprinklers? Or do you happen to know if, you know, have there been concerns around cost or, or anything else? Or is it become very standard to include that in that code?
So, um, it ha, it's always a conversation. It's always an ask to tell somebody, hey, you need to spend five thousand dollars more, ten thousand dollars more on your home. Um, it has been a provision of the International Residential Code since two thousand nine, and it's become a really standard practice, especially in the front range. Um, I know we had a list of people, but there's, there's a whole bunch more that I even found additionally. But a lot, basically, as it stands right now, uh, City of Louisville is kind of the circle in the midst of everybody who also requires it. That includes the unincorporated portions of the county, Town of Superior, City of Lafayette, City of Boulder, um, City, Town of Erie, uh, Broomfield, Thornton, Westminster. All of these surrounding agencies already have these requirements on hand. Um, and so, yes, cost is, is, is a consideration. Um, but it seems like it's, it's become a very standard practice that we recognize. It's come down since then.
Just one other little question. So um, I'm just kind of curious, like, this idea of amending the international fire code about placement of an energy storage system, is, is there a reason why it's not already included in the international fire code or?
I can speak to it if you want. Um, so the, the, the fire code tries to be as general as possible in order to account for as many different agencies. in order to account for as many different agencies that would adopt this. And it is slow. So this is a very new chapter approaching these topics. We've talked about energy systems in the twenty eighteen code, and I think that was the first addition that actually even talked about battery systems and energy systems in general, but it's a really slow process. And it's very likely if that becomes something that they see at this national level that needs to be further siphoned down for people to decide that it'll come over time. So I think that's where our discretion comes and what we recognize as a threat that we'd rather put in place now. So that future people don't have to reamend it after an issue.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Other questions, council members? I've got a few questions. I know that the process for developing the twenty four codes is it's not something that's thrown together in a few months. It's a long process. Regardless of what one thinks about the current administration, there have been discussions around certainly around electricity and and, and gas stoves and things like that, right? I wonder whether there's been any effort so far to either incorporate or predict any potential impact on any of these codes by some kinds of national measures that we're going to end up having to, to deal with that you know already are going to be problematic.
I, I don't think so. I don't think that's something that, it's definitely not something that of course was discussed with the twenty four codes. There's nothing that we're aware of that's under discussion that would influence the codes in the near future.
Yeah. Well, that's, that's good to know. Think I had a couple of others just a moment. You know, I hesitate even raising this, but on, I was kind of confused a little bit about the cohort code because there's some money attached to following it, right?
Yeah, I can talk about that.
Can you talk about, cause there's the recommendation for adding staff and?
Yeah, yeah. So there is a, a grant that is being run through the state and there's an automatic allocation. I think we would. And it doesn't mean we, we don't have to adopt the cohort code to qualify for it. But there's a six hundred thousand dollar allocation that the city is expecting to get for energy code implementation. We do think if we adopt the cohort code, especially, we will need technical help and would anticipate wanting to hire a consultant or potentially staff to help implement the cohort code just because of the, some of the complexity of the modeling requirements.
If we received, we, we could receive that money though, even if we adopted the code as.
That's my understanding. We could still receive the money. I don't, you know, we, it may be limited to how much we would use that money for a building code consultant or a staff member in that case. But we would want to use the money to, you know, further policy. And there may be options, we just haven't gotten into that detail for helping the staff implement the twenty four base code.
Yeah, I mean, might the way to use that be to educate folks and help with compliance?
I think all of those things are on the table to use the money. It could go for education. It could go for studies, policy development as well as implementing the codes.
Right.
Yep. If, I think Hannah wants to.
I have one thing.
Oh.
In your budget retreat, you saw the sustainability planner staff that was proposed that was contingent on the six hundred thousand dollars. So that's the staff person being discussed at this time.
Thank you, Hannah. The other thing was, I saw in the, in the end of the staff report, the fiscal impact was no fiscal impact. And there's no fiscal impact, as I understand it, especially the cohort code initially. But after, what is it, three years, we lose whatever assistance we get. And there's a certainly a fiscal impact after that, right?
Yeah, I, I think we should anticipate that with that code. We're working under the assumption we would need again, additional technical assistance, whether it was a consultant or staff to implement that code and do it well. So once those grant monies ran, were, were to run out. If, if there weren't additional grants, there could be some requests for funding for either consultant or staffing.
Okay. I'd like to take some public comment right now. If, oh, do you have a question? I'm sorry. Yeah.
Thank you. I just thought of a question as I was looking through the packet. Regarding preemption, it was mentioned multiple times in the packet in relation to our three options. Can you help us all in the room understand that a little more?
Yeah, there, there are some federal regulations related to a local jurisdiction's ability to regulate gas fired appliances, fuel fired appliances. And so basically a municipality or a local jurisdiction is, is not able to adopt certain regulations that would prohibit, generally is how I understand it, or limit the ability to use these fuel fired appliances as defined under those federal regulations and they set the efficiency standards. So really the local jurisdiction is not supposed to adopt regulations that require more efficient fuel fired or that would prohibit fuel fired appliances. There's more detail to it, but that's generally what the, the federal regulations state.
So could our current code conflict with the federal regulations and put us at risk for?
I think that's a consideration that should, you know, that should be considered in the decisions that we make. I think there's, you know, I think, trying to think how to, how to answer this because it is a, a legal question as well. So, you know, we could get more information from the city attorney, I would say. I think council's been provided some legal analysis on this in the past, if you want to go back and refer to that legal analysis that was provided, but I probably couldn't speak to it and I shouldn't speak to it without the city attorney kind of weighing in on the current, that, you know, the kind of the risks, potential risks of our current code.
Yeah, no, that's fair enough. I do think it'd be helpful to have a review of that. And then if there's any updates given the amount of time that's passed between the original draft and now and the landscape that we're currently navigating, that's my only question for now, dear.
Thanks. Any other questions?
Yeah, I'm going to continue on that. So if we were to adopt the regional code and the cohort and then get the funding, would it be possible at a later date to add additional restrictions like we're the high efficiency gas appliances, for example? And, and continue to require that, but not until after an amendment to this code appeal adaption?
I want to make sure I understand your question correctly. You're saying if you adopt cohort.
Correct.
Then could we go back and make further amendments over time depending on how legal landscape changes?
Yes.
Yeah, we certainly could. Yeah, we could continue to monitor legal landscape one way or the other. That is the one I made. It could require or electric equipment or change that code as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Maybe this is doing things slightly out of order, but I, it may help the public comment, because I know people have only three minutes and I know that when we've talked about codes in the past, it's a real challenge for people when they're talking about that. I wanted to get maybe a quick straw poll about whether anybody on the council is interested in continuing the current code that we have. Because if there's somebody who is interested in that, that's fine. We can talk about that. If they're not, maybe people can, you know, we can focus on just the cohort or the hook, line and sinker is what I would call it. Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think I'm not interested, but I do have a question about that point.
Go ahead.
So my question was, I don't know how easy this is to answer, but can you make sort of a rough comparison between our current codes and either of the other sort of two options, just sort of generally speaking about the energy efficiency you get from those options?
Right. So, so we haven't, we haven't quantified it. So I, I, I don't want to make assumptions without actually studying it and quantifying it. You know, certainly there are a lot of potential positive benefits from all electric requirements. You know, of course, and that depends on the grid and how they're producing energy and all that. And, and so there's a lot of assumptions baked into that. So I would say that the benefit of our twenty eighteen code is from a, you know, a carbon production or environmental impact standpoint is that is one of the benefits of sticking with the twenty one code and the all electric requirements that aren't in the twenty four, either of the twenty four code versions. But we really can't quantify it. We have, we haven't done that.
Rob? Um, your technical person has his hand raised?
Okay. So, yeah, so we have Andre with Schum's Coda. He may have some info on that.
Uh, thank you, Rob. Uh, can you hear me, council members?
Ken.
Yes.
Um, so thank you very much for having me and Rob is spot on. The uniqueness of your code does present some unique difficulties in benchmarking it compared to other national codes. What I can tell you is that the twenty four code in comparison to the base twenty one code does show a seven and a half percent energy savings for residential construction. It does show an almost like for like, a little bit reduced on energy cost. Basically what they look at is the amount of electric energy for climate zones five and six, which are a little more intensive, right? To heat during the winter and some of those reasonable concerns does change into a little bit of offset there compared to the actual energy use savings. So they show energy use savings still being offered on the twenty four code in comparison to the twenty one for your climate zone. But you are exactly right because you've had a unique sort of homebrew method as an approach to this. It is a little bit difficult to make a like for like comparison, but there are some numbers that you can at least look at to see the average increase in efficiency between those codes, if that's helpful to you.
Yes, Councilmember Kern.
Thank you. Staying on the, the twenty one code thread, I thought it was interesting in the comments that, and I was hoping you could maybe further explain if you know that Denver is planning to stay, continue using their twenty one? Is that so currently correct?
They have significant local amendments to their code. And I think my understanding is a big reason is that it's very complicated and they are wanting to keep consistency. You know, for all the, the things that I talked about, it tends to be more business friendly, the development community. You know, having change year after year is very difficult for designers and builders to kind of keep up with those codes. So I think they're seeing some benefits to keeping with the code just for keeping consistency and being more business friendly with the current code. Plus I believe they feel their, you know, that they have a very strong base code. And so going up to the twenty four code would add a lot of complexity to that, is my understanding.
Yeah. So city and county of Denver, as Rob mentioned, they decided to keep their, they ended up doing their twenty one code, kind of like we did a lot of electrification and ended up keeping that and calling it the twenty five code. But it's basically the body of the twenty one code with electrification that we have. There are some differences. It's not apples to apples, but it's kind of the same concept. And they decided to keep it just for consistency and instead of changing it around for contractors and lose an electrification part of it.
Thank you.
Right. With that, can I pose the question again of whether anybody is interested at this stage in maintaining the regime that we have right now? Or whether the other two alternatives are the ones we really want to focus on? Anybody? Well, I'll, I'll let me put it in the, the more limited way is are you agreeable that we focus on the two alternatives as opposed to like keeping the current status quo for the code? Okay. Good. Hopefully that'll make that certainly lowered my blood pressure. But I, I hope that that will make maybe the public comments that come a little bit more focused. So we, we don't have to go over the, the many, many downsides of the current code as it is. So why don't we take, with that, why don't we take some public comment? Do we have? If, let me sort of start it. If you have public comment, fill out a, a form, which is right outside the door. Give it to the clerk. Clerk will call you, call your name when you, she calls your name, come up to the podium. Introduce yourself and tell us whether you're from Louisville or not. And you got three minutes to tell us what you're going to tell us. And if you are able to get somebody to throw in their time to you, then you can have up to six minutes. You don't have to speak for the full three or the full six. I'd appreciate it if there are no jeers loud, you know, cheering, booing from the audience, because it makes it hard for people to want to get up there and say their piece. And we want everybody to be able to feel comfortable. So with that.
First up is Kevin Lombardo, followed by Martin Ogil.
Hello? Is this, is this on? We're good. Okay. I do expect applause, by the way. I'm just kidding. I, okay, that's great. That's great. I'm Kevin Lombardo. I'm a Louisville resident. I'd like to thank council and the city for taking up this very important topic. I did send an email, but I would just like to reiterate a few of my thoughts. First, I think that the twenty twenty four IECC with cohort additions should be the starting point for this conversation. And the other option, well, the only one now should, should be discarded. Sure, these codes are vetted nationally, but they are done so to accommodate the lowest common denominator nationally. And Louisville is anything but the lowest common denominator. We are a leading community and a leading state for energy efficient and resilient buildings and we ought to act like it. This is an ideal time, I think, to, to implement an all electric building code. Neighboring municipalities have done this, so we know it's doable and it's a matter of public health. We've got to get natural gas out of our buildings. They're having a negative impact on our health, specifically our children, and it's, it's dangerous. We, we did the same for radon. We would do, we should do the same for methane. I'd also like to see council direct staff to develop an analysis that introduces or reintroduces the renewable energy offsets. I guess the RC appendix, as well as requirements for dedicated roof space and orientation for onsite solar. And then finally, stretch goals should be developed to help incentivize building to higher building standards. These codes don't actually represent the latest and greatest in building technologies. So incentivizing zero energy ready home or passive house standards. We could maybe provide funding and training for architects, builders and subcontractors, streamline permitting processes and or reduce permitting fees to help incentivize building to these standards. And we could use the funding maybe from the EPA to do that. That's all I've got. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Kevin.
Next up is Martin Ogil, followed by John Cowley.
All right. Well, thank you for the discussion tonight and based on it, I amended my comments just a little bit. But my name is Martin Ogil and I am a Louisville resident. I reviewed the materials on. I reviewed the, um, materials on tonight's agenda. And while I'll leave the technical details to the experts more versed in the specifics, I'm here to urge that, uh, we do adopt the strongest possible and most conservation oriented codes possible. That may be starting from one of these two choices, but then going further in the future. I do encourage the adoption of provisions that reward smaller homes too. And, uh, building, uh, size credits and then also that set ambitious minimum, uh, insulation requirements. Uh, I think these and other steps are crucial if we're going to be serious about reducing our energy use and, and building a resilient future. I appreciate the complex nature of this because we have such complex systems. But what I really want to do tonight is, um, spark an even more, uh, urgent, or sense of urgency, greater sense of urgency to treat energy issues with the seriousness that they demand. This isn't just about policy. It really, truly, I think, is about survival. I really think we're at that, that point. Living systems of earth which support all human life are already under extreme stress and they're not going to wait for us to, to catch up. As a biologist for 40 years and a energy educator for 35 of those, I see firsthand how energy choices affect both ecosystems and, uh, human wellbeing. And without immediate major shifts in how we use energy, and in no small part, how we design and build our homes and buildings, we're headed towards a future of suffering, uh, including here in the United States where we're generally much more insulated from such effects than other parts of the world. Uh, as I wrote in a previous letter to council, uh, we must address the specter of climate change and its associated challenges, especially threats to food security, or human suffering will be widespread and severe. So I urge you to act decisively, strengthen our building codes. The amended version of the 2024 IECC at a minimum, lead by example, uh, the time is now. And I wanted to add to this, just hearing some of the conversation that I think we should put a lot of thought into incentives, recognition, friendly competitions, and make it really the theme of our community to address these issues, not just discussions, tech- technical discussions in our, uh, city council sessions. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is John Cowley, followed by Peter Reesey.
Hello. Uh, we meet again. I'm John Cowley. Live in Lewisville, uh, just off Cherry Street. Martin gave a good introduction. He almost named the name of the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room is climate change. We wouldn't be having this conversation if it weren't for climate change. People could build whatever they wanted. They could waste energy and pay for it. We wouldn't care. We are here because of climate change. And because of that, we need to impose strict, stricter emission standards on our builders in order to do our part, which is, we can't do that much, but little Lewisville can do everything little Lewisville can do. And I actually, I'm here because I have a suggestion. My main point is, is to give you a way to help make it easy to accept these tighter standards. And I want to call it the 5% rule. Here's how it might work. I'm reading this because I want to get it right. There might be a lawyer listening. Proceed with installing the more strict codes, but include in the regulations a firm financial cap with something like this. This is in quotes, in some document somewhere. Building to meet these stricter codes does not require the building owner to spend on these high efficiency upgrades more than 5% of the structure's projected assessed value beyond what the structure would have cost if legacy systems were installed. Of course, the builder could choose to, uh, exceed the cap. As an example, suppose you're billing a house and it costs $800,000 to bill. 5% of that is $40,000. So the builder would do the, his, his or her best to meet the codes, but wouldn't be required to spend more than $40,000 on those high efficiency upgrades. And to be clear, these are additional costs beyond what the house would have cost. Such a cap would have to be worded carefully so that unscrupulous builders couldn't inflate costs to gain the system. In other words, you can say, oh yeah, that insulation is going to cost $40,000 to do that. Done, that's all you have to spend. But wording that legally tight would be your challenge. That's, you're the experts. This maximum of 5% increase in a house's construction costs would be a reassuring limit to impose in order to meet our obligations to reduce, uh, global warming. Some people I know have said that actually when you're starting from building a new house, it costs a whole lot less than that to have a, an excellent house.
John, I apologize, your time's up.
Oh.
Thanks, sir.
That would, yeah, that would cover your butts from the people who would complain about the costs that don't exist. Thank you.
Next up is Peter, followed by Steve Norwood.
Good evening, council members. Um, I am Peter Geisie and I'm a Lewisville resident and I also sit on the, uh, building board of appeals board. We as a board, I think, strongly disagree with bringing in the cohorts version because we would be the only city that has this in it. Denver's not doing it. Boulder's not doing it. We're going to stick our necks out again, like we have in the past to get cut off. We did this before with the, before the fires came in. We mandated all of these energy policies put in. We didn't have the infrastructure or the parts or pieces to even get a lot of the electrification systems put into these houses as they were starting to be built. The demand is there, but the, the, the actual physical parts and pieces that go into the house weren't available yet. So it took about an eight month leg, leg time to get a 320 amp or a 400 meter socket put in. And a lot of these houses went in, built with a submeter already put in to get two, two, 200 amp services put in. So I think one of the things that we really need to look at is what's available to the public for the mechanics, you know, can a, I'm all for energy. Absolutely. No, all of us are. Can you put in a 30,000 square foot warehouse on a, on a heat pump? No, the equipment's not there yet. It will be, but how are you going to mandate that you put in a heat, a full electric heat pump into a three, 30,000 square foot warehouse? It just doesn't, it, it can't happen. One of the other things is the 600K grant that we're going to be getting. And we can put that towards, you know, additional, uh, resources. Energy logic is going to be one of the raiders that comes in and rates the house. We're going to have to bring those people along to get the house rating. Who's going to do all the work and you're going to pay them directly? So I don't know if the city's going to start hiring one person to come in and do all of this, but it's all going to fall back on the energy raiders. And there isn't an energy raider large enough to do commercial buildings yet. We're still in process to figure this out. And I did talk to Energy Logic. I talked to another couple raiders at a conference. They just don't have the bandwidth to do it yet. You know, as per the cohort, you know, we're still working through the appendix RC. And when we brought all this stuff in years ago, they revamped code numbers, they redid code numbers, they wrote new code. So for a builder to come in and actually figure out how to build something in our city is very, very complicated because there's three different renditions of our current code right now. So yeah, we want to revamp and, and get the new code put in. The fire sprinklers, absolutely. The dollar something a square foot is absurd. I just looked, uh, talked to Matt and there was a, a house that they just completed, $26,000 for a fire sprinkler system. That was on a 3,200 square foot house, which is $8 a square foot, not a dollar 60.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you.
Next up is Steve Norwood, followed by Matt Berry.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'm a resident of Lewisville. I'm an architect. I'm the newest member on the building code board of appeals.
Can you state your name?
Steve Norwood, sorry. So, um, when we look at these model codes, um, they're published by International Code Council. I'm a, I'm a former committee member, uh, for the fire safety committee for the, um, international building code. And I wanted to add my support to the concept of residential fire sprinklers. And one thing I did want to mention is that as these energy requirements increase, there's the tendency to use more combustible foams in buildings and more composite lumber. And so there is a fire risk in, in residential properties that is, I think, has increased over time. And, uh, fire sprinklers are very effective at putting out a single fire at the location where the fire starts, which also reduces smoke exposure to the residents. I understand there's additional cost, uh, associated with this, but this is really becoming a national standard. Fire sprinklers greatly add to the life safety of occupants. I'd like to, uh, recommend that that get adopted. Thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
Next up is Matt Berry, followed by Tiffany Boyd.
Hello, I am Matt Berry. I live in Lewisville and I'm also on the building code board of appeals. We recommended the 2024 IECC with the minimal amendments mainly based on we're going to be able to have more compliance with that code adoption. We're going to have a better impact on the environment, uh, if people actually will build, uh, to a code. Uh, I, I'm also a structural engineer. I build a few houses a year. So I got my feet, uh, boots on the ground. I'm seeing a lot of people avoid the permit process right now. If you move your, uh, gas fired stove, you're not allowed to replace it with a gas fired stove. It has to be an electric. This is in Boulder. And I'm seeing a lot of people do this unpermitted now because they already have a gas fired appliance that, that they're just moving it to another wall. And so they're just going to avoid the permit process to do that. The other thing, just on a higher level, is the embodied energy in creating that new appliance is going to be more than the energy it's going to take to use the existing appliance for the rest of its useful life. Denver kept with the 2021 code with, uh, minimal additional amendments outside of their amendments because they wanted to stay compliant. There's a letter that I received from the Denver Building Department that I forwarded to Chad that, uh, that talked about that. There's lots of professionals that vet these codes and put them together. And I'm really wary when a third party comes in and adds a whole new appendix. The code, it's funny, the, the reason that they call computer code code is because it's very similar to the building code. It, it interacts with all kinds of different areas. And to have additional appendix, appendices being added by a third party makes it very difficult to do. The other thing is I, I don't know this cohort. I mean, the cohort lists all these cities, but we don't know who this, who the people on this cohort are. Are there stakeholders involved? I, we, we don't know, you know, the, the background of this. So I would love you guys to discuss that and maybe vet that out a little bit. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Next up is Tiffany Boyd.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Tiffany Boyd. I'm a Lewisville resident and, uh, thank you tonight to the council for serving our community. We appreciate your time and commitment to a thriving community. I'd like tonight to, to suggest that the council adopt the cohort adoption for, for many reasons that have been mentioned earlier. Number one, just common sense in terms of as we move together as a regional cohort on the inevitability of these codes having to be stricter and stricter in order to meet the decarbonization goals of our communities. You know, for a while after the adoption of some of the amendments in the 2021 code, people were saying, well, why should Lewisville stick its neck out and be different? Well, this is an opportunity to work together with regional municipalities and by adopting the cohort recommendations through Dr. Cog, which is something I'm sure that Hannah could explain that has been truly vetted. This is a great time also to implement an all electric building code with lots of renewable energy offsets incentivizing, um, all electric choices. Could help pay for the training. It could help expedite permitting processes. And one of the things that people should remember about the International Code Council is that, yes, it is influenced and there are recommendations made by industry leaders, but it is also influenced by the American Gas Association. So the American Gas Association plays a very large part in lobbying when the ICC codes are formed. And that's something we need to keep in mind because methane is far, far more dangerous than CO2. And not only is it in our homes when we have gas appliances and furnaces, but it is contributing to the disproportionate impact that the United States is having on climate change. So, um, whether it's the 5% rule that John recommended or other incentives, the cohort adoption will give us as a community a chance to move forward together regionally with the communities around us that are trying to address the decarbonization needs of our area. And, uh, thank you for taking my comment.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Next up is Andy Johnson.
Good evening, uh, Andy Johnson, uh, Lewisville resident. Uh, it's nice to see you. So, uh, some of these discussions are really hard to do. First of all, in three minutes, even more so in a meeting. It seems like, um, a lot of the, the energy topics really require a, a circling of a table and, and having stakeholder discussions. There are a lot of people here who have great things to say, who are really knowledgeable and could be really helpful. And I think cities should take, take up the offer of them being here tonight as an extension of them being, uh, solid stakeholders in that discussion. I sat on LSAB a long time ago in the early, mid 2000s and, um, we had very different discussions around energy and building code. And, um, and it was not nearly as interesting or friendly. I, I did, uh, get to be with building code board of appeals during that time to have some of these discussions around energy. And I, I'm looking at the same members on that board that are here tonight. And which is an amazing dedication, um, for, for these, uh, board members to continue this fight. And, and honestly, I've, I've also watched them be largely ignored. And they take a lot of time. These code amendments are hard. And no one knows that more than the building code board of appeals and, and Mr. Root. So, um, I do think that it's important that these professionals are taken seriously because it is a lot of dedication. So, um, you know, years don't correspond with the, 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 the actual code adoption. 2027 has already probably been almost fully fledged by now. And they're probably already working at 2023 or 2030. 2024 is still a strong code. Regardless of cohort or not, um, I do agree. I think the cohort, as, uh, Ms. Boyd mentioned, is an incredibly good model. I think that there's an opacity to it. I'm still trying to figure out what a cohort is, so maybe it's just my obtuseness. I, I think it's really important that we represent pricing accurately. I can probably put that in a letter more accurately since I'm running out of time. In terms of sprinklers, huge supporter. ADUs are going to be incredibly problematic around, um, sprinklers around the around the logistics, excuse me, around the logistics as are hers rating, minimum requirements. And I can also put that into a letter. It's super important that you understand that. We have a very good AD ordinance and we could create really big issues for it around sprinklers and energy requirements, which will be a problem for creating housing where we don't have opportunities within our land of single-family homes. So thank you very much, and I'll follow up in a letter.
Thank you, Andy.
That's it.
That's it. Do we have anybody online? Come back. I guess maybe the way, well, I'm gonna, I'll do the same quick show of hands. I kind of have a sense of probably where it's going to come down. But is, let's take the cohort for just a second. Just based on what's been heard, not discussed yet, but what's been heard, how many of you are inclined toward the cohort model? Okay. And does that mean that the rest of you are more inclined to the 2024? Or would you rather hear more discussion? I'm not going to assume that.
Yeah, I'll answer that question. You know, my first preference would be to sit here and write our own building code from scratch tonight. But given the time constraint, I think I would tend to adopt the 2024 code that's already been written by the experts.
Go ahead.
I'm actually inclined to take the recommendation of the BCBOA for the 24 code.
Any others? Do we have any, what's your thought, councilmember handling?
So I'm inclined to start with where BCBOA is, but I'm open to discussion if we feel like there's anything from the cohort that we would like to pull over. But I'm not seeing like a clear benefit in just a straight-up adoption of the cohort based on the information we have today. And it sounds like there's not going to be universal adoption with municipalities in the area, which was one of the original intents, I believe, of the cohort. So that's where I stand at the moment.
I think it's worth having discussion. I mean, I don't want to draw out too long a discussion where we kind of have a sense of where we're going. I really appreciate all the comments so far from public and particularly from the BCBOA because I too have great respect for the people who are in this on the ground and who see this and who know from prior experience our, the Louisville, previous Louisville way of doing codes. I think of, he's not here right now, but I think of Christian Dino, who was on the BCBOA and who kind of, I don't know whether, I want to be careful about how I characterize it, but just sort of was fed up with spending a lot of time and having recommendations rejected. I don't think that's a reason to necessarily accept recommendations of a board. But this is a very special board and they're required to have a great deal of expertise. And so I don't hear anybody on council suggesting otherwise. I think that that's, and it's important to say that, I think, and to recognize how critical that is. Because, you know, I won't say that I digested every single one of those codes. It's just phenomenal. And, you know, these things are there for building safety and health and environment and all of that. And there's a lot of balancing that I know has gone into the developments of these codes for a whole bunch of reasons. But I have, I guess, some thoughts around specifics of what I think a good code might be. I am interested though in, from the people who are, you know, we can start quickly and talk about the cohort and whether there are, you know, the advantages of those. I think I would like to hear some discussion about. And if that's okay, people comfortable with that, hearing a little bit about that. All right. Either, either of you or anybody else. Yeah, go ahead.
I like the idea, first of all, that all three of these groups pretty much agree on everything. There's just some three, like minor differences. And I like the idea of being in line with surrounding communities and getting consistency and maybe even simplifying the whole process for the planning department. If we're the same as the surrounding communities and we don't get the competition from builders for what city they're going to build in because ours are too restrictive. But we also can, as Rob said, strengthen it at a later date if we so choose and make it even closer to what we currently have, if that's what we want to do. But I just think the idea of partnering with the surrounding community is essential in just about everything that we do if we want to be successful in supporting the community and the building community.
Thanks, Tom. Councilmember Cooper.
I very much agree with what councilmember Fahy just said. You know, I think there are a few things and maybe staff can elaborate. I mean, you know, Louisville was a member of an initial cohort of 15 cities working together to develop regional building code. And then that got elevated to Dr. Cog, where it's 59 municipalities in the Denver area. And I mean, I'll say something first and then ask a question sort of. But, you know, I, so Louisville has, you know, been, you know, has had some element in this cohort for a number of years now. And I, I don't, I don't think we should step away from that. I mean, I think, you know, we entered this cohort with good intentions to develop a code that would make sense in various different ways across all these municipalities. And I, I think we should stick with that. And I think it would be helpful to hear a little bit from staff about, you know, what has the city's involvement been like? You know, who has actually been working on developing this code? Because I believe that there are consultants and organizations in the area that have been working on it heavily. And that it's not just, you know, being slapped together. So I think that would be a nice bit of information for us. I think the, in terms of the specifics of the code itself, you know, what I, probably the thing I like the most is that it really tries to incentivize all-electric building in ways that the base code just doesn't. And I think that is probably the most important feature of the cohort code. I don't know if staff wants to say something or?
Yeah, I would just also reference everyone to attachments eight and nine because those are materials that the cohort actually put out to explain and describe the process and the result and what the code includes. The city has been at the table for the, for the local efforts and as well as it's moved on to Dr. Cog. Our sustainability manager has been primarily at the table. So I would also invite Hannah to talk more and in more detail about our involvement. But, you know, we've been to a lot of meetings, provided input on different code versions. They've hired consultants to draft the code, Schum's Coda and Sweep. Is there anybody else? I think Schum's Coda and Sweep were the primary consultants that, and then Lotus, right? Yeah, Lotus Engineering were heavily involved in drafting the code and bringing the cohort along with the versions of the code.
As, as councilmember Cooperman said, this has been going on for quite some time. So my predecessor was also involved in the cohort a long time ago. I took that on at a different point. And it's been drafted with sustainability professionals, but also building code officials as well. Now we move into the Dr. Cog regional effort together. And so far, Golden has adopted the regional code and North Glenn is up next, and then we're on the docket. So we're open for discussion. It is, it's been developed with technical experts. We have Andre on who can answer any technical questions as it relates to the 2024 base code. But yeah, happy to provide any other information you guys would like.
Yes.
Sorry, I just didn't catch that. North Glenn did adopt the cohort code?
They have it on their council agenda, but Golden did, yes.
Okay. So if we join the cohort, it would currently be a cohort of two?
Correct, potentially three.
A dyad perhaps.
Any other questions for me?
Go ahead, councilmember Fahy.
Are there any other communities or groups that are anticipating joining the cohort?
In the cohort code, there is a spreadsheet that lists out all of the municipalities that have been involved in the cohort and when they're looking at their code adoption cycles. Ours just happened to line up when it's a relatively newer effort. I will say all of the municipalities are looking at it in future years. However, it's up to their elected leaders how that looks, but yeah.
How long has the cohort concept and existed for energy codes? Do you know?
Oh, my goodness. I believe it first started from a grant opportunity with Boulder County. And I want to say it's 2018. Do not quote me, but it's been around a long time to try and build these codes with technical experts and city staff.
That, that sounds right.
Yeah.
Other questions for Hannah? Thank you, Hannah. I appreciate that.
Thank you, guys.
Other comments about the cohort model, if you will, or? Yeah.
I'll just say, I don't want to be second to join the cohort. If in a few years, all of our neighbors are going that way and it turns out it's very buildable and nobody's struggling with it and it's not creating huge costs and difficulties, I'm all for it. I think many of us have heard lots of unhappy stories about trying to build to our current codes or at least the two before we recently changed it. And I am leery of making the same mistake again. And I think there's a lot of value into picking the, picking something as close to the off-the-shelf option as we can, you know, and see how this continues to evolve. But I think we earlier tried, tried to have sort of be out in front of the pack in terms of building code and paid a pretty heavy price for that. I'm not, not eager to repeat that experience.
Other councilmembers? Yes, councilmember Current?
I actually have a question that was kind of brought up by public comment. As, and it very much relates to what councilmember Heffner was talking about. I do appreciate the maybe simplification or less complex code in the 24 versus the 21 or what we did after to make the 21 different. It sounds like this will be easier for commercial construction to be able to get on board and follow. Are there, because we did run into this. Definitely Chad knows this one very well, but the equipment requirements, it was brought up that there may not be enough, like current equipment to meet like warehouse capacity needs that are fully electric or coal-combed air source heat pump type things. Is that currently accurate? Is, are there some concerns? Are there going to have to be allowances made if we adopt this too soon? And then we have construction that can't proceed because there's not even any equipment to comply?
So the, the 24 IECC, both versions, the version that the board has suggested and also the cohorts uses the basic fundamentals as far as mechanical systems. They're readily available versus when we did the 21 code and we had heat pumps for large office spaces and then air changes going in and out of pharmacies. Those heat pumps couldn't keep up. And so that's why there was that big push for, hey, we need to have, either let us use electric resistant or gas heating for a backup because of air changes. We won't see that with the 24. The 24 has been bested. In fact, you know, for a while there, we were looking at moving forward with adopting the 24 building codes, but we couldn't, there was a federal lawsuit taking place on preemption with those. So those got held up. So out of all the codes that have come through ICC, the 24 is probably the one that's been best at the most. Everyone's really looking at it in depth as far as, hey, is it feasible? Are there any preemption violations? So, yeah, it's, what we're looking at is if somebody was to build under the 24 codes, they would be fine. There wouldn't be a problem of materials not being available or mechanical systems not being available.
Thank you.
So let me just add, because I think your question too is between the 24 cohort code as well. So the 24 cohort code does have incentives to go all-electric. I think some of the comments I've heard is they're strong incentives. So it could be hard for, you know, to meet some of the code would be a concern without all-electric. If it's okay, I would like to invite Andre to maybe speak to equipment and, you know, if all-electric, you know, how, how strong that incentive is and how the cohort contemplated availability of equipment.
So certainly, I think one of the things maybe to frame this information just for council's benefit, and I don't want to confuse this further because it's obviously a lot of hats, a lot of different codes that you've had to consider in this process. But the cohorts amendments were a specific response to the Model Low Energy and Carbon Code, which has been being drafted by the state of Colorado, the Colorado Energy Code Board. And so that part of the preparation for this was to simplify those requirements, which do become a legal obligation June of next year. Either if you adopt a code after that point, you'd have to have something as stringent or you can make a decision like you are contemplating right now that postures you to not have to change a code after that deadline. But just to make you aware, that's of a concern to you and kind of, you know, framing this context. But then, yes, to get to the issue of all-electric. So an all-electric pathway was added for commercial construction in the cohorts amendments. We are currently finalizing our draft on that. I actually had a meeting with Christine Brinker of Sweep this morning about that same information. And you're absolutely right to point out that there are obviously concerns that this community has experienced with going ahead on codes and then needing to find out whether or not those items are readily available within the community. That's part of the stakeholding process that the cohort went through to discuss those items and to make sure that this was not a requirement, but an option and pathway. So you're right as far as the incentive structure goes. The idea here would be to simplify the building thermal envelope requirements, simplify additional efficiency requirements associated with that, basically making it so that you have a prescriptive method of easily being able to make a all-electric building while at the same time knowing that you have advanced efficiency and that due to the choices that you made in your equipment and simplifying any modeling or anything else you'd have to go forward with. So that's the intention out of that. And I think that that probably, well, I'll stop there and just see if anyone has further questions before I kind of try and refine that down.
Questions?
I just wanted to speak with incentives. Thank you. So councilmember Cooperman and I had an opportunity to spend an afternoon with the HBA last week and. Councilmember Cooperman and I, Cooperman and I had an opportunity to spend an afternoon with the HBA last week and. Got a lot of. Did, what did I say? Oh, Home Builders Association, Denver Metro, sorry. And like, whoo, wow, I actually knew an acronym that somebody else didn't know. That's kind of silly, isn't it? If anybody might not have known. Uh, so the Home Builders Association of Denver and they took us, we we met with a lot of developers working on projects. Um, and in a community specifically, so it was, um. Uh, Centennial and Lone Tree that are having huge success with kind of the the momentum of some multifamily housing. Um, and other less expensive homes, uh, that Lewisville would like to embrace. And it was fascinating actually to find that there are some of these builders who are choosing all electric. Because there are incentives that are not being like tied to mandates for them, but there's financial incentives. Like almost $20,000 per unit, right, to go fully electric. And then they don't have the cost of running gas lines. They don't have to hire more skilled plumbing labor to additionally like manipulate that. Their insurance is potentially lower because they're not handling gas on site. And so the builders are finding that there's a fiscal advantage to them. So I think as far as which code to go with, it's one of the reasons I really appreciate the recommendation of the Building Code Board of Appeals. There are processes in place that are working, even in places that are only using a 2018 code. To be very energy. Not independent completely because that's not what they all wear. Some had solar, but incredibly like low Hurst ratings, fully electric. Um, using new innovated cold climate gases, um, or coal committed air source heat pumps. That in the last year, the technology has gotten better. I was so encouraged to hear about how much great research is going into improving this because a few years ago. With like locally with Louisville and the Marshall Fire rebuild, we heard a lot of scary horror stories of people not systems not being right sized. The equipment costing them a fortune to use in the winters. And that is really being worked on. Part of this Dr. Cog decarbonization grant that's funding the 600,000 to the city of Louisville. Is also putting hu- millions of dollars, not just hundreds of thousands, but millions of dollars into education. Into, um, new certification requirements for installing coal climate air source heat pumps. And, uh, duct works for HVAC companies. So I feel so secure in the fact that the. Industry is going to be making a lot of these choices that having a mandate for it. Actually could be less productive. We might get less of the good building. And in this effort to make it perfect, we could lose the good. And I would like for us to encourage that good, more efficient, reduce greenhouse gas emissions. Um, and have these financial incentives. I actually kind of liked the 5% by the way, just not, you know. So I think these are highly effective. My my one kind of question about this, and I really appreciate that Andy Johnson brought this up. Is how do we address locally the ADUs? If it's an add-on to a new property, is that considered an addition and is there for exempt? And if it's part of new construction, will we have a separate standard if it is a standalone ADU? Because of the difficulty in doing this with a, let's say, 600 square foot unit.
Other comments about?
So on the the additions is as long as it's part of that main structure. Um, they don't do a hers. Uh, calculation. Now on that for the ADU, um, we have been requiring them because it's a new structure.
So I'm I'm wondering if they have a prescriptive compliance path under the proposed code.
Under the proposed code, we do not. Um, have that.
I'd love for us to, you know, have a better conversation on how we do that. I. Um, it would be a shame that we work so hard to create, you know, good policy and incentives and then we do something that ends up hurting that process. So if we could in as we're having the conversation, I think separately about the ADUs, that would be really appreciated.
So Councilmember Hamilton has anything before, I just want to make sure we get through everybody here.
Well, it. If yours is directly related to Judy's, you can go ahead. No, okay. I I had a question attached to Councilmember Hefner's comments earlier regarding, um, the cohort standards and, you know, being the second one to adopt it. So my natural next question is, is there a timeline for us adopting? The cohort, um, into our code, or can we essentially? Keep our eyes on what's happening and adjust it at any point in time should we wish.
Yeah, so theoretically you could, yes, you could adopt the cohort code at a later time. Um, something to keep in mind too is one of the things we've talked about is consistency in code is also important. So, you know, the whiplash of adopting this code now and then maybe a year later, looking at the cohort code. I mean, that's a decision that council would have to make. Um, but also trying to find some consistency, um, and predictability over a series of years is something. That could be seen as a positive as well.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Good.
I have a question for Rob also. Which of these three would be? Less intrusive, less staff time to actually implement and then. And then in. Enforce with new construction.
Right, so I think the the 24 code with the Building Code Board of Appeals minimal amendments. Would be the easiest to implement for staff.
How about, uh, enforce?
Yes, implement and enforce. So yeah, I think all around it would be a more straightforward code for our staff to to implement and enforce.
I guess talk for just a second about my view of the cohort. I've been through this dance before and I didn't like the first dance. Because we went through this. A few years ago. We were not ready for the code that we adopted. The process for adopting it was. Definitely. It it certainly set back the relations between the BC BOA and council significantly. Um, because there was a very, very large change that was made before second reading. And what we ended up with was a code that was a leading. Community code and nobody else adopted it except for Boulder and it was a disaster. And what we have done since then is to carve it back in a way that was frankly, a lot more. At least better than where it was. And it took a while to get to that point. But, uh, we did. What I learned from that though is, you know, it's a. It's always great to have, it's always great to be a leader in the community on certain kinds of things. This is not something. That frankly, I think in my discussions with people. Uh, in Louisville that they want to be a leader in. This is one of those that if you get out in front of everybody, you end up getting no building done. And people look at you, quite frankly, as a fool. And I think we did that. Uh, a few years ago, that's my. My long experience that that like Councilmember Hefner. It's good to wait. There's plenty of time to see if something gets adopted. But we've done it. And to ill effect, and I absolutely don't think going down that road again. Is at all useful or good for the people of the city of Louisville. I I I think the other thing, there's, there's an interesting question of kind of. Distortion. You know, the the code, the 24 code is. You know, we can, we can discuss that and we will in a minute, but. To the extent that. There are so many, uh, changes. I I think that the distortion of what is already a a pretty good code in terms of energy efficiency. And environmental sustainability and, uh, I think buildability. Where. Where you're adding in a bunch of. Incentives in the code and it's really disincentives. I think I I don't know that they're incentives. I think it's a disincentive. To do something other than electric. I'm much more in favor of, um, market solutions generally. We don't have any money right now to be providing incentives. And I'm, I'm just a little buried about that kind of distortion that ends up happening, happening in a cohort code. For me, it's a matter of being cost effective. It's a matter of being competitive. It's a matter of being consistent and easy to apply. And we have been notoriously. Wanting on all of those for a long time. And we have an opportunity actually to fix that. Uh, and it doesn't mean we don't change things. I think there's, there's been good ideas. I I thought John's comment about the 5%, interesting. These are things that may be good. Down the road. But we're here to try to make it, I think, a policy decision and I just am not willing to throw in with. A bunch of communities where I don't know where their heads are at. Golden is a fine community. And they actually are a community that, uh, we compare ourselves to a lot. Um, I don't know because I haven't talked to the mayor there about it, why they chose to accept the cohort, uh, model, but. I'm just not ready for that. Uh, I, and I. I I think that's kind of my position on it. If there are other things that we want to talk about about the cohort, I guess as a result of the discussion. There were kind of two who want to. Who think that that idea is a good one. Were there more persuaded by? The discussion to move back to the cohort?
I I'd just like to make a motion if you didn't entertain one. Uh, I I would move that we, uh, direct staff to, uh, proceed with the, uh, 2024 code. As recommended by the Building Code Board of Appeals.
A second.
Discussion. Yes, Councilmember Cooperman.
I had a couple little questions about the base code. And then I also had a suggestion for something that might accompany it. So first. I was still really curious. You know, the the Building Code Board of Appeals recommended this, um, amendment about the thermal envelope. Which sounds like a very good idea. I'm just kind of curious why it's not in the base code already.
All the the above code insulation?
Yeah.
So with the the Marshall Fire rebuilds. The the 2021 code had. Our values that we're trying to keep in the 2024 because the 2024 actually drops the. Ceiling R value from R60 to R49. And the way that what we've seen is a lot of the installers will say it's an R60. But if you read the code and what's supposed to take place, is it supposed to settle a little bit? And we're looking at, you know, the the 20 inches, say of blown in insulation. Well, it settles down and it's not R60. So if we went with the 24 code where it said R49, it would settle down and it's not going to be 49. So what we're, what we were thinking is, hey, let's just keep it at an R60 because that's where we're at currently. And it will settle down a little bit, but we're going to be, um, where we should be. Right, a little bit above that. And then, um, the we kept pretty much everything else the same. Uh, as far as, uh, our values in commercial buildings, the roof 49 and. And we were a little more stringent on the thermal envelope. The, my thought is, hey, I want these buildings to be like a Yeti cooler. You go out on Lake Powell and. You have ice for seven days later, right? Um, and because on the 24 code, some of the equipment is not going to be as efficient as our current code. Where you can use, um. The, say it's an 80% furnace instead of the nine 96, right? So I want that thermal envelope to be the best that we can possibly have. Because that's where it leaks at.
I I would just add with some of the, as I understand it, some of the performance and modeling paths could allow you to reduce the insulation. To some extent, and I think there's a thought that having a a minimum thermal envelope and insulation requirement will just set a baseline. So that if you are going through a modeling or trade-off process. Um, that there's, you know, just a minimum standard for the reasons that Chad mentioned.
Yeah, we, we, we learned through this process that. A lot of the raiders that are paid by the developers and the contractors. Um, weren't doing what they were supposed to be doing. And so we we want to make sure that, hey, there's a a base, no matter if you, you know, go through the her system. And you're you're trading out a little bit here and there. Um, what we're seeing is that some of these raiders that were coming in were probably high school kids, um, working for the company and they didn't fully understand. Um, the, hey, what insulation's supposed to do? And so we we put in the higher standard of, hey, this is the base, no matter what. This is kind of like the foundation.
And I would just, as far as what minimum standards are in the cohort code or how that. Modeling trade-off interacts, we do have Andre if he wants to talk to that.
Yeah, um, Rob, would you be willing to kind of clarify your question there a little bit? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, so the question is, yeah, thank you. So the Building Code Board, our Building Code Board of Appeals version. Um, has, um, minimum insulation or thermal envelope requirements is how I would say it so that. Regardless of how it's modeled or what trade-offs are picked through the modeling, we ensure a a minimum. Um, insulation and thermal envelope standard regardless. And so I think there was a question about a comparison between codes, like why why does our code have that and the cohort code doesn't?
Sure, um, it's a very fair question. So in the 2024 code, there was a general rolling back. Of insulation requirements between the 21 and the 24. You could see that on the residential, uh, to the point that Chad made, right? The R60 compared to the R49 that had been rolled back to. Um, and basically during the process of the code development, there were discussions about the long-term paybacks of insulation over its lifetime. Versus some of the more advanced features that some of those folks that were in the code development process were shooting for. Um, as a result, there ended up, uh, being what I would say is maybe a little bit of a trade-off process on the thermal envelope there. Um, I wouldn't say that, uh, one is necessarily advantaged more than the other. I would simply just point out that that was kind of the way it came to be. And because of that, that was carried over into the cohorts amendments as well as the model low energy and carbon code, which to reiterate. Becomes the base code for the entire state, if you consider any modification after June 30th of next year. So really it was kind of in alignment with that consideration. So, um, you know, just to bring that into focus, I know it's come up a few times about maybe taking a piece that you like out of the cohorts amendments. That does change in terms of legal requi- uh, requirements for you because of HB 22, 1362. Um, which makes it pretty clear that after June 30th of next year, you're either beholden to the Colorado. Uh, it's model low energy and carbon code or something they deem to be stricter. And so that alignment was kind of a key component of that.
Thank you. Um, so my other little question was in the packet, I noticed. That the base, the 2024 base code has a requirement around onsite solar. Um, I was just curious if you could speak to that, what what the requirement is.
Yes, are you talking about the commercial requirements, just to be clear?
Uh, that, I I'm not sure it said explicitly what I, where I was looking, but I assumed it was commercial.
Yes, so there are some commercial requirements towards onsite solar. Um, more so than simply just being a trade-off or an additional credit. So this is not, um, previous iterations of the code. This was a feature that you could electively add, um, and therefore get some benefit back in terms of your overall compliance. Or demonstrating through a modeling perspective that your building was more efficient. Um, now this is becoming outright requirement in the 24 code or what they call a rec, an REC, which is the ability essentially to buy. Uh, solar from another source that's offsite if your building site cannot provide that. Um, so there's sort of two methods to be able to go about this. Um, this also, uh, relatively speaking, you know, maybe consideration. This also relatively speaking, you know, maybe consideration for some of the. Solar ready components that have also been a state code related, you know, comparison there. So in the twenty one code moving forward, that's become also one of these statements. So there are two methods for being able to, you know, kind of achieve that. If you'd like to go into detail about exactly what it means in terms of efficiency for the building or amount or cost. I can certainly work on trying to pull some of that information up for you.
That's okay. All right. So I wanted to make a suggestion, you know.
Are you making a friendly amendment to the motion?
Possibly. So, you know, i- if we're gonna move ahead with the, just the twenty twenty four base code with the amendments suggested by the Building Code Board of Appeals. I think it'd be very nice if we could alongside of that, offer a suite of incentives. Where we basically incentivize primarily electrification and we offer things like. Permit rebates or water tap fee rebates or the like. Or we plan to use that sixty thousand K to offer incentives. And I think that might be a nice way to. Yeah, a nice way to proceed.
Do you want to make that in the form of a?
Sure, so I'll offer a friendly amendment that. Maybe that staff come back with. A suggested suite of incentives that the city could offer to incentivize going beyond the twenty twenty four base code.
I I don't accept, and it's for the reason the mayor said earlier that that we're a little tight on cash to go. Providing incentives for things.
So why don't we take a vote on that direction on that part? And we're doing this just right now on the. You know, it's an energy conservation code piece and I think it's proceed with the BCBA. Wouldn't you, you can state your.
Yeah, just. It would be to give staff the direction to proceed with the BCBOA recommendation as presented in our packet.
All right, all in favor?
That was all, at least my intention was to cover the waterfront.
I'm looking at page ten of the packet, which is the. Council communication from staff. That there's the two thousand twenty four I code series. Excluding the International Energy Conservation Code and Residential Sprinkler Policy. And then the alternatives for the conservation code, which we've spent most of the time talking about. And then there was the alternatives for residential fire sprinklers. And I'm, I'm sorry if I, if we didn't. Understand that, but it sounds like there are, there's just a little bit of confusion.
So I might just, I might kick it to Director Zuckarogier to tell us what, what more he needs.
Right, so I think the. So I, I don't, I'm not hearing any council members who don't want to proceed with the twenty four I codes at large. So I think we'll move forward with that unless I hear otherwise. I think the.
Just quickly, is that a thumbs up from everybody? The.
No, just the I. I mean, like just.
Excluding, excluding the I, International Energy.
And then so really it's the residential fire sprinkler question, which I think. There's the question of, is there a direction from council to move forward with? The Building Code Board of Appeals recommendation, which is to include residential sprinkler requirements or?
Is everybody comfortable with that recommendation? That is a change from current policy. Are we? Okay, I think general consensus with exception. Always with exception with consensus.
So I, I, I think that covers everything we wanted to get feedback on unless there's something council wanted to bring up for other amendments.
And the, the, I think sort of five to one was the energy code vote is my understanding. Five votes for the BCBOA proposal and amendments and. So I think we've got it. Do you need anything else from us or do you have a?
No, I, I think this is good. Of course, nothing's adopted. We're gonna come back with the adoption hearing process. I think we're still planning to go to. EVC to have some discussion about energy code as well.
Good, all right. Thank you, everybody for that. That was, I think, a good discussion and, and I think there will be other times to. Talk about more specifics as we move on in the process. So thank you. The next item is a discussion direction on council salaries and. Do we have a staff presentation on that? Yes, there she is, our deputy. Deputy City Manager, Samma Fox. Are you doing the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate you, council letting me be remote today as I'm recovering. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, I have a brief verbal presentation and then I'll open it up for your discussion. So, good evening, as you mentioned, I'm Samma Fox, Deputy City Manager, and the item before us is discussion direction on council salaries. As you know, council salary is set by ordinance and was most recently adjusted for council members in twenty seventeen and the mayor in twenty nineteen. There was an ordinance considered in twenty twenty three. It passed on first reading, but after second reading was not scheduled, no action was taken. It's important to note that any salary changes go into effect in the next election cycle and do not impact currently seated council members. Staff in the city manager's office, human resources office, and city clerk's office coordinate to obtain data from the. Colorado Municipal League for comparison cities. These cities mirror the cities used for staff salary analysis and you can see all the cities included in the table in your packet. If we consider the median for all of these cities, the Louisville mayor and council salaries. And in Louisville, the mayor pro tem is paid as a council member. Appear a little low, even when you take out the outlier of Denver. However, when you compare to the smaller city group that council has used in the past. The Louisville salaries are much closer and a little bit higher. And if you narrow that comparison down even to the closest sized cities within five K on either side. And are immediately neighboring cities, that trend continues. So with that, I'd like to open this up for council discussion and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Samma. Questions from different council members who would like to? Comment, Councilmember Cooperman and then Councilmember Fahy.
I'm curious. Have you? I don't know how easy it would be, but have you tried to sort of adjust for cost of living between different communities? Or any, or similar kind of considerations?
Thank you, council member. I have not done that in this analysis. We've not historically done that in this analysis. If that's something that you're interested in, it's something we can pursue.
Not necessarily, I'm just kind of curious. Thank you, though.
Okay, other questions, comments?
I did think, I so appreciate you putting in actually the, the comparisons with all the cities, not just like averages. Because I think, you know, we, we're very closely matched with Golden with the kind of the population and the requirements and. I think we also, in Lewisville, we have a very unique. Constituency. Very involved, very active, which I think requires a lot more activation from council members. Than you find in some other communities. And which means a lot more time. And I think if, it would be interesting if there had been like some kind of like polls or something done to. Talk about how many hours other cities councils think that they spend. You know, working for the council, attending required meetings, voluntary meetings, which are to the benefit of everybody in the community. Time with emails. We're, I think we hold a lot of, and which is absolutely something that I'm hundred percent supportive of. The, like our word meetings that we do, we communicate a lot with each other to make sure everybody's on the same slate. And I think that for us to be comparing ourselves to cities that are a little bit more active and engaged like ours. Is probably a better correlation.
Other comments? Yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
I think for me, you know, I, I certainly think the questions that my fellow council members have asked are interesting. And maybe worth considering in future years. When I just look at the data in front of us today, I don't see that we're really an outlier in any way. Compared to our surrounding neighbors. And above and beyond that, given the recent discussions we've been having around our budget. And the impact on staff and potential services. I, I don't think now is the time for us to talk about raising our pay. In light of all the discussion and impacts on staff and our community at large.
Second. Councilmember Cooperman.
Yeah, I, I definitely agree with what Councilmember Hamilton just said. No, I, I've expressed some interest with staff about having a broader conversation about. You know, what could we do to try to diversify the pool of candidates who might run for city council? And whether or not salary is one of those things. You know, we, we don't have. The material to really have that conversation. I think Councilmember Dickinson would want to be part of that too. So I'm not suggesting that we do that now. I just wanted to put it out there that I think it is something worth discussing.
Thanks. Any other comments? I, I agree with Councilmember Hamilton myself. I, I think it's not, not the right year to deal with this. I think it's important for people to know that if we decided to change this, it's not going to change the salaries of the people around the table. During this term of their service. That's pretty important. It doesn't, it takes away a little bit of the feathering of one's nest as a. Goal of some of this, but I think it's. It sounds like the, the consensus that we keep the, the salaries the same for all of. The reasons that people stated. Is there any? Deputy City Manager, do you have any question about our direction here?
No, thank you, Mayor. I hear that you'd like to keep the salaries the same for the moment. We're happy to bring you back additional information in a year, unless you'd like anything sooner.
Yeah, I, I think probably. If there's some desire a year from now to have that information, we'll, we'll ask for it, I think. We can put the burden on us to do that. All right. I think we have reached the end of our. Agenda tonight, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
All in favor?